All right, you know what, we're at 7:02. So let's just go ahead and get started Doug, so please open us up.
Okay, I don't know if anybody can see me, but the key thing is, if you could hear me. Good evening brothers, sisters, family, friends, and possibly even some cadets. I'm Doug Davis, Vice President of the Medenbach Memorial Foundation, and I welcome you here tonight for our first Town Hall meeting. Now, I gotta add this, it's Tuesday night, it's Vespers Night, way back when, joy, joy, joy.
Joy, joy.
There we go.
Joy, joy, joy.
It's great to be alive.
Joy, joy, joy.
Well, happy holidays to everybody, and I hope everybody joining us tonight is well. And during these most unusual times, it is good to see familiar faces and to be talking to people. So thank you for joining us, welcome, and we hope we have a productive meeting. You know, way back when, as I think just before the pandemic kicked off, we had this idea to form this group. H. Medenbach Foundation. And you know, we never during the whole process had a chance to get together one-on-one, we had to do it all virtual. Through the ups and downs, coordination of a group of fine people, we've managed to pull it off. It's been slow because of the fact that we haven't been able to meet regularly in person, and because the government slowed down and kept a real slow process on our nonprofit 501(c)(3). But we got it all, as Walt said on his last Medenbach Monday. So I'm so glad you're here, I'm so glad we're doing this. You know, we really wanted to have a get-together in person to celebrate the kickoff of this thing, but it just couldn't happen because of the times. But that's the one thing that is on our mind to do as soon as we can safely get together. Let's celebrate and join and have a good get-together funded, of course, by the foundation. I mentioned Vespers and I mentioned joy, joy, joy. I just have to make a shout out for a very, very important person to our Alma mater. Twenty years ago, on the 12th of December, General Sinelli passed away. I think of him every Christmas. He was a fine man, class of 39, cadet, PMS, teacher, dean, and chaplain. And as I knew them both as a faculty member, General Sinelli and General Medenbach were the best of friends. And when I was a cadet, General Baker was off to Florida with his new wife at Medenbach, and the two deans ran the school. So here's a shout out to Brother Sinelli, may he rest in peace.
Amen.
it's time to take a little bit of time, since you've seen names, you might not have seen any of our faces. I'm going to introduce the Foundation Board and advisor members. And when I read your name, wave so we can recognize who you are. So we have the following in our foundation group. Scott Newell, the secretary. Susan Rapp, member. Diego Rubio, member. Carrie Baccone, member. Dan McSweeney, Strategic Communications. Keith Hackenberg, Legal Counsel. Brian Lentz, General Counsel. Glenn Watermaker, Website. Ryan Wallbridge, Website. Jonathan Fishbein, Advisor. Sandy Bryant, Multi-Channel Strategic Advisor. And last but not least, our fearless leader. The guy who started off with the Medenbach Mondays, who encourages us all to be better and do good for our Alma mater. Walt Lord.
General Walt Lord.
Walt, sir, glory is yours.
Doug, thank you so much for that kind introduction and those wonderful words. And I'm really happy that you took the time to give some kudos to all of our board members because they've all worked so hard to make this foundation possible. And I'm deeply indebted to you and to all of them for that. To all of our members, I hope you had a wonderful Thanksgiving. To those of you who celebrate it, I hope that you had a blessed Hanukkah. And to all of those who celebrate it, I hope that your Christmas season is starting off well and you have a very merry Christmas. It's great to have you all tonight. What I want to do with you is just review the purpose, the mission, the core values and core principles of this wonderful Medenbach Foundation that you have all decided to join. Our purpose in general is to fill the void that was created when the Valley Forge Alumni Board of Directors was disbanded by creating an independent nonprofit alumni and family-led organization that's dedicated to two missions. First, to raising funds for programs that support the continued development of cadets as citizen leaders above and beyond what the school is responsible for providing. And second, to preserving the deep history and spirit of the Forge by providing opportunities for us, for alumni, to connect, to network, and to engage in transparent, welcoming, and inclusive environments. Our core principles, and I've got to tell you, everyone who's here tonight, and I really do hope you'll spread the word and continue to help us reinforce these core principles. Because based on the environment in which we find ourselves as an organization, I think it's important for us to remind ourselves of these core values every single day. First is that we will always be respectful, we'll always remain positive and mindful of our words and actions and the impacts that our words and actions have, especially on cadets and on our Alma mater. We'll be transparent, we'll be clear with our intentions and open in our communications. We will never, ever, ever ask you, our members, to be silent if you disagree with us. If you ever disagree, if you've ever got feedback, good, bad, or ugly, please don't ever be quiet about it. Please let us know so that we can help you help us improve our foundation. And finally, to be responsible. We're going to operate with integrity and hold ourselves accountable to the highest standard of government. Can we mute our microphone? Thank you very much. That was a wonderful voice we heard there, but thank you. In the nonprofit world especially, it's really, really important that we operate with the principles of good governance. And I can guarantee you, I pledge to you, that the board members of your foundation will do exactly that. I'm going to turn it over to Scott to talk about some program updates, some progress reports, some things we've done, some things we plan to do. But before I do that, I want to make sure that I kind of set the table on a couple of the points and also piggyback on something that Doug mentioned. You know, we've been very deliberate about the way we've operated in this first year as a foundation. And that partially is because, as Doug said, we were waiting for our nonprofit status to be approved by the IRS. That has now happened, we're a registered 501(c)(3), so we'll start to pick up some momentum. But we also wanted to be very careful that we were following good governance, that we were starting very deliberately and not rushing to failure in any regard. But you can bet now, and especially when the POCS is behind us and that we can meet together fairly frequently and that we now have that 501(c)(3) status approved, you can bet that we're going to gain some momentum. We're going to start to build out our board. We're going to start to ask some of you to step up and share your expertise with us, either as board members, advisors, or committee members, to help strengthen our foundation and move it forward so that we can be an even more effective support organization to those cadets on campus at Valley Forge. I'm going to turn it over to Scott now, and I welcome your comments and your questions and your feedback, and yes, your criticisms when we get to the Q and A. Thank you.
All right. According to the settings on my computer, I'm now unmuted. I hope everyone can hear me. Walt, give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. All right, I'll assume that that's going out to the rest. I've seen a couple of hands go up. I guess those are for questions or comments while Walt was speaking. This being our first Town Hall, I guess the first thing I'm going to address is we haven't really worked out how we're going to handle the questions in future meetings, but for tonight, until we establish those boundaries, or at least the process, please write your question down, hold it till the speakers are done. And we do have a fairly good amount of time tonight for an open forum to answer all of your questions tonight. I'd like to take just a couple of minutes here and cover five things. The first one being, to expand a little bit on what Walt was saying about why we were incorporated. What does the incorporation really mean? We've gotten a few questions on, okay, so you made a foundation, that's really cool. But why is it such a big deal that we are now legally incorporated? Like many alumni associations of colleges and universities and even some high schools, that we are now a fully legally incorporated entity, legal entity, which gives the organization and its members, that's you, a legitimate platform to expand the involvement and benefits of a unified alumni association, friends, family members, and even cadets, in addition to certain legal and tax advantages as a corporation. As we all know, the VFMA Alumni Association was never incorporated by General Baker or anyone else, and nobody would have ever expected the continuous turn of events over the last several years that led to the dissolving and cessation of alumni representation on matters affecting our Alma mater. Legal incorporation provides a fully independent organization where alumni can speak their mind freely and provide benefit to fellow alumni and hopefully in the very near future to the school and the cadets. To that end, we've been very open and transparent since we incorporated. We've reached out in a very positive fashion to the VFMA Foundation Board, the school administration and leadership, and even the Alumni Affairs Office. We've reached out in a positive manner and made it abundantly clear that we will support the school and the cadets and that the school can call on us for support as any school would of their alumni. And we have been unacknowledged and ignored by the board and the administration every time. So the first matter I want to speak to you about tonight, or that I'm now reaching the bottom line of, is we urge you, the alumni, to reach out to the VFMA Board and its individual members, as well as school administration and the alumni office, and encourage them to accept our help, as well as forwarding them any questions about the status of the Forge you may have. The second matter I want to address is very brief, and that's that we have officially received our IRS 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. Probably everyone on this call is very familiar with what that means. Your donations are fully tax deductible. And as with any nonprofit organization, you can specify what your contributions will go to if you so choose, or they can, at your discretion, remain unrestricted and we'll apply it where it's most needed. Third issue, we are expanding our communications channels and content. Glenn Wanamaker, who's kind of the technical brains behind this meeting tonight, and Brian Wallbridge, classmate of mine and fellow bandsman, is the other technical brain, have volunteered to get us this far technologically, set up with the website. Glenn does a fabulous job with the videos. They got us this far and they've pledged to continue flushing out our web presence and our email structure, things of that nature. But again, they are working on a volunteer basis in their off time. We have very deep plans to add a lot of content to the website. For instance, our bylaws, history, things of that nature, that will be open enough for public inspection. You can even download a copy when we get there, and we are working on that. We did receive some concerns this evening about, what about the folks that are not on social media and rely on email? Okay, we'll take the hit on that one. We were not able to get the email chain going, but we'll have that for the next one, I hope. That's the web presence we'd like to have, the social media presence we'd like to have, that you are constituents, expect, and deserve. Please continue to be patient while we flush that out. Fourth item, we are forming the Governance Committee. What? A committee is part of a nonprofit? Yes, nonprofits don't get very far without committee involvement. The first duty that we have as the board now that we're incorporated is to form this Governance Committee, which has two primary responsibilities. The first one is to complete the revision of our standard corporation bylaws into the ways and means of how we will organize and operate the foundation. The set of bylaws that we have right now are kind of what you would call a standard corporation boilerplate type of deal. We've become incorporated, it worked great, and now it's time for us to flush out the details of where and how our organization gets to where it's going. The second duty of the Governance Committee is to establish the various policies needed by regulations and to ensure that we're operating within the spirit of established laws, rules, regulations, best practices for nonprofit organizations. Please stay tuned, and we've received a lot of questions on how can you help with the organization? How can you become a board member, an advisory member, or sit on a committee? All of that is coming very soon, we hope in the first quarter of 2021. Last but not least, we are continuing to revise those bylaws and will include them on the website when they are ready. You, our fellow alumni, friends, family, cadets, brothers, sisters, supporters of the Forge and the alumni, you have a say in the rules that we'll adopt. Walt has said and has reiterated on many times, we are not deaf. We want to hear from you on how we should set up and operate this organization and where we can best help. So please send in your input, email your thoughts to info@medenbachfoundation.org. And now Glenn Wanamaker will put up a screen showing that. Psych, I got you Glenn, I owe you one. Info@medenbachfoundation.org, if you don't have something to write that down with, it's on the website. And you can send it to any one of us directly, or info@medenbachfoundation.org. That's all I have, and I'll turn it back over to either Walt or Glenn for who's coming next, which I believe is the engagement moderated by Ms. Sandy Davis.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you Sandy.
Okay, I'd like to start by saying my name is Sandy Davis Bryant. There we go again. So for those of you wondering who I am, I did not graduate from Valley Forge. My father graduated from Valley Forge. My father was tactical officer at Valley Forge for years, the professor of military science. My brother graduated from the school, my brother-in-law graduated from the school, and I married one of my dad's cadets. So it's kind of, it's all in the family. And I was nominated to moderate this discussion. This is also my first virtual moderation, so what I can say is, we've segmented this into three approaches. One, we have three questions that were pre-submitted that I will read and then pass to the appropriate board member for a response. And then we're going to open it up to open forum Q and A. With that, I do want to remind everybody that we are about providing opportunities to communicate transparently, openly, and honestly. But we do want to make sure that the conversations follow our core values. So we will try to do our best to moderate anything that does go against our values. So I just ask that we remain on topic and that we abide by the foundation's core values. I am also supposed to be monitoring chat. So if you have questions that you would like to submit or a comment, you can raise your hand with the hand button that is up at the top, or you can send a personal chat message. However, I'm not sure I'm going to receive all of them, so I will ask other board members. If you see a hand raised or somebody requesting a chat that I am not addressing, please feel free to jump in because it might be that I'm not seeing it. All right. So our first question, pre-submitted, is from Jeff Crewer, past secretary of the former Valley Forge Military Academy Alumni Association Board of Directors. So he asks, "With so many of us not being held in high esteem by some of the individuals charged with leading our Alma mater, how do you propose we gain traction to positively impact cadet life at Valley Forge?" And Walt, I'll toss that one over to you.
I'm happy to take that one Sandy. Jeff, thanks so much for the question. You know, frankly, we're in a tough spot, right? I think we all know that. We all care deeply about our school, our Alma mater. We all care deeply about the cadets who are on campus today. We want to do everything in our power to support those cadets. So as individual alumni, you know, we can certainly continue to give to the school through the Development Office, and if that's your choice, then please do that. I would much rather see you do that than stand on the sidelines and not support at all. However, if you do feel disenfranchised, as Jeff's question implies, and you want to go another route, then I think our foundation is certainly a very viable one. One, because we are now a registered nonprofit and your donations are tax deductible. Two, because you can restrict your funds to certain causes with us and be assured that we will apply your gifts to your desired purpose. I will not get into a mud-slinging contest tonight or on any other occasion, but I think we all know that that doesn't always, or at least in the past, didn't always happen with the administration at the school. But I pledge to you, if you say that you want your gift to the Medenbach Foundation applied to effort X or initiative Y, that's where it's going to go. And finally, I think we're going to reach a point, we're going to reach critical mass as we continue to succeed, and I have no doubt that we will, that the school will have to start to take us seriously. I think that if we maintain our core principles and they realize that we are not a negative force, that we are here to help the cadets, that they'll start to listen. And if they continue to fall upon difficult financial times as an institution, they may see us as a viable support arm, and that's what we want to be. So Jeff, I think really it's going to take a little time, but I do think that we ultimately will be seen as a cause for good and that we'll be able to apply all of our efforts and gifts to helping those cadets on campus.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, the next one is from, I'm sorry if I mispronounce names, it is not my specialty. Jeffrey Winans, class of 66 and 67. So this is more of a concern than a question. And Colonel Davis, I'm going to start with you and then maybe pass this one to Scott because I think he touched on it briefly. "My question concerns the removal of our Alumni Association. Our voice has been silenced by the chosen few who have determined that it's their right to dictate what we can and what we can't say. We need to reestablish our social media so we can effectively communicate with our fellow brothers and sisters. Our Alumni Weekend needs to be reactivated immediately. What do we do about that?"
Well, thank you Jeff for your question, and I agree. We need to get an Alumni Weekend, either on or off campus, as soon as we can safely and within COVID restrictions do so. Your guess is as good as mine, but I would probably say that this April-May is not going to happen yet. But we need to get some practice in this kind of forum so we can meet and get together and maybe do a brief Town Hall and then let's get little chat groups for things. And there's technology, you know, as families, we all do Zooms and things like that. Well, this is the place to touch base. Well, if so-and-so is involved, let me touch out to him and see if I can get a Zoom meeting with he and a couple of my other classmates. But we are committed to having some kind of get-together as fast as we can once things open up. It is terrible that they get away with the Alumni Board of Directors. As Valley Forge says, "The Alumni Association under Tom Goldblum is alive and well, and you can join that." And they don't have any governance, other than the Board of Trustees, who are the ones that, not trying to be negative, but they took $70,000 of donated funds by alumni and just did what they wanted to. We will never do that. You need to know what's happening to that money. It's openness, that's the way we're going to do business, that's our principle. So things such as a TAC dinner, alumni get-togethers, maybe, you know, we tried, I tried to get a core meal before the holidays and sent a letter to the President, Colonel Helgason. It was never responded to. I'm hoping it's because they just got too busy and didn't respond before Christmas with everything going on and that they'll come back to us in January, February, say, well, let's do another holiday meal or some meal, completely funded. And I couched it that we would give those funds and coordinate directly with food service, not the school, if they felt any better about that. So this is now our Alumni Board of Directors called the Medenbach Foundation because it took its place. Does that answer the question?
Thank you, yes it does. While you're responding, I will say that Sean Fox has graciously offered to host any functions at his hotel in the area near Valley Forge. So thank you Sean. And I do know that James McLalen has a question.
Sandy, if you want me to expand on the previous question, I can do that.
Sure.
So whoever you just tossed that to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm getting used to this software.
We all are, so no problem.
Sandy, I can come back to that question later, go ahead.
Mac guy, okay. Yeah, I just want to respond to Walt's comments. Walt, I am a real supporter of yours, but you also know that I keep in touch with some of the people at the school. I do not believe that these people that are running the school down there are ever going to forgive us, okay? I am very disappointed in what I'm seeing, I hate to be Mr. Negativity, but these people, I've tried any number of different ways to try to get things going and find out what's actually going on down there. It is virtually impossible to get straight stories from people. So the people from the Northeast Ohio Regiment have been doing the same thing. I get down there to their meetings, I'm here in Michigan, but I go down to Cleveland and go to their meetings, and they've been trying to do the same thing. They keep on, people keep on, they invite folks from the administration up and people say, oh yeah, we're coming to the meeting, we're coming to the meeting. and people say, oh, yeah, we're, we're coming to the meeting, we're coming to the meeting, and then they never show up, one excuse after another. So I'm pretty disappointed at this point. Walt, I, I love your enthusiasm. I just am very concerned that these people are, are ever going to take and change their way of doing stuff. That's all I have to say, thanks.
I, I, sorry, I do, I appreciate those comments and I fear that as well, that, and I, I hate to be such a fatalist, but I fear that some in control would rather see the school closed than see an organization like ours come in and help it survive. But I'll also share that, you know, I've, I'm an eternal optimist. I've never met a challenge I didn't like. I've got an advantage on most of the guys who, who are running that school in that I graduated from it and they didn't. So I think I probably will have a bit more staying power than they will. And frankly, you know, my confidence has to be mixed with some faith. I pray fervently that something will happen to change so that somebody can either convince the folks who are there now to change course or allow someone else to come in to help the school change course. But I, I do appreciate your realistic comments. I think they're, they are comments that we all need to keep in mind, so thank you for that.
This is our last scheduled question, pre-submitted question of the evening, which I'm sure will go into some lively conversation. This was submitted from Dan McSweeney. Many of us have watched the developments at Valley Forge over the past decade or so with a growing sense of concern. To what do you, to what do you attribute the wide variety of allegations concerning mismanaging, lack of transparency, and poor conditions on post? So Walt, I'm gonna pass that to you, and then I would love that to go to Scott next.
I, sure, I'll, I'll take the first whack at it, Sandy, thank you. Dan, great question, and I think it's at the, it's at the core of the problem on campus and core of the reason that we've come together as a foundation. I think the root cause of all the problems that have been generated there is simply put, poor governance. And I'll, I'll share an anecdote with all of you tuned in tonight. You know, there is a group of two dozen or so heads of school, all of the nonprofit, mostly secondary, private schools in the Delaware Valley, ranging from the Quaker Schools to the Episcopal Academies, to the Haverford Schools, to Valley Forge. Heads of school come together once a month for a long working lunch to kind of share lessons learned, share industry standards, get to know each other. It's just a great professional collegial organization. One of the really great things for me, as a person who was new to that world, was the fact that between monthly lunches, we had a continuous stream of, of email interchange and phone calls and, and exchanging ideas in lots of different formats. And probably, well, it was, it was right before the Christmas holidays when I really started to get a sense that I was not going to be able to accomplish my self-imposed mission of improving the governance at Valley Forge. And by governance, I mean the way that the board runs the, the strategic level direction of the school and interfaces with the president and the staff and gives what they're supposed to give, which is strategic guidance for the president and staff to execute. I just started to feel like I wasn't making any traction. So I put out an email question to all of my fellow heads of school, and it was a series of questions that related to board governance and specifically communications with their boards and their board chairs. And my final question was, how often does your board chair communicate directly with members of your staff? And the unanimous response I received was never. And some of them amplified their responses, telling me things like, well, that would completely undermine me, well, that would cause complete chaos on our campus. And sadly, that's the world that probably the last five or six Valley Forge presidents have lived in. I would imagine that the current president is probably under the same conditions. I'm not really sure he cares, but I'll bet he is. And I had an engagement, an invitation from a very seasoned head of school, from a school very close to Valley Forge geographically, who had been in place for a couple of decades. And he was kind of the dean of our group, he was the informal leader of our group. He invited me to lunch, one-on-one, just me and him. And I think that he sensed the, the trepidation in the message that I sent to my peers. And when we sat down for lunch, after we got through the small talk about family and weather and traffic and all those kinds of things, he asked me point blank, how many presidents have you had at Valley Forge in the past fifteen years? And I told him, well, I was the sixth. And he said, okay, well, they couldn't have all been bad people, could they? And he snickered a little bit. And I, I knew it was a rhetorical question, and his next question was, what is the common denominator, what has been the constant at Valley Forge for the past fifteen years? And I said, well, the Board of Trustees. And he, he just snickered a little bit. He was trying to reassure me to just kind of drive through it. And I told him that was my intent, that I was just going to live through it, hopefully see some board turnover, hopefully show some success, enough success as a president, that the board and its chair would trust me to do the job they hired me to do without calling five or six levels into the organization to give direct guidance or ask questions. But obviously, a couple of months later, we'd gotten to the point where the situation was just untenable. And I, I share that just as one example of the really dysfunctional governance that I think is the root cause for all of the problems that we faced at Valley Forge. When you have poor governance, it's difficult to build good programs. It's difficult to recruit and retain cadets. It's difficult especially to recruit and retain good donors because good donors don't want to give to organizations that have bad governance. And when that happens, your revenue is reduced, your programs begin to fail or you have to chop them, your infrastructure starts to fail because you can't invest in it. So Dan, long answer to your short question. After my short ten and a half months there, I would tell you that, that it's governance that really has been the root of the problems. And, you know, certainly there are lots of conspiracy theories, there are lots of theories about shenanigans, financial misdeeds. I don't have evidence of any of those. But if they did occur, then certainly it was probably to try to recover from all of the impacts of that poor governance. So thanks for that question, and I'm absolutely willing and eager to hear theories from any of our other board members or members of our foundation.
I would actually like to pass that to Scott in terms of, from a parent's perspective, right? So you're not only a graduate, but you were, you're a current parent during all of this. So when it comes to allegations concerning mismanagement, lack of transparency, and poor conditions on post, what were your experiences like and what got you activated?
Wow, thanks, Sandy.
In three minutes or less, of course.
In three minutes or less, I can probably do it in two because I've actually answered this question in conversation many times. I attribute, going back to the, the third question, I believe this all comes from a, from a lack of involvement. I was not an involved alumnus, despite being the son of an alumnus, a second-generation bandsman. I was not an involved alumnus for the first twenty years after I graduated. I went to Alumni Weekend, didn't send very many checks, didn't, didn't really do a whole lot of work. I was not an involved alumnus. And now that I'm looking back on this and the set of problems that we have, I think that's probably very common amongst our alumni corps. Please don't quote me on the numbers, I'm going to use the number seventeen thousand because somebody told me seventeen thousand. I don't know if that's accurate or not. Let's say since nineteen twenty-eight, nineteen twenty-nine, there have been seventeen thousand graduates of Valley Forge. Some of them have moved, have, have passed on, who knows what that percentage is, but a lot of us have just kind of faded away. In our social media campaigns, we've, we have several websites. I don't think any of the, any of the social pages have more than maybe a couple of hundred members. This group, I think we, we maxed out tonight at fifty. There's been a lack of a critical mass by the alumni, and that's okay, probably since the beginning of the school, because for decades, we thought everything was okay. We come back every Alumni Weekend, the corps looks great, or maybe the, you know, we, maybe we put in our complaints because we all know it was tougher when we were there. The corps looks good, the campus looks good, everything is all hunky-dory. And then over the last twenty years or so, there's been a lot of shenanigans going on, but we haven't really been there to see it. The other lack of involvement, so, so how do we solve that? This goes back to Jeff Cryer's question as well. Jeff, and, and my alumni brothers and friends and family out there, we built this country on rebels. Guys got families, people got tired of living under tyranny and bad conditions and all sorts of other stupidity. So we made a Declaration of Independence, we went to war, we went up, a bunch of farmers went up against the, the greatest experienced army in the world, and we built a nation. How are we going to save Valley Forge? I think that's part of it, everyone's got to get involved. Pick up the phone, call your buddy, send a letter to someone you haven't talked to in thirty years. Get the word out what's going on in our alma mater. You don't have to send in tens of thousands of dollars, but be involved. Get the facts, do your own research, talk to the board, talk to the administration, visit the campus, listen to the Medenbok Foundation, see what we have to offer. We got to get more involvement. The second piece on the involvement, Sandy, I'm coming back to your question. You said three minutes, and I've, 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 I've heard that. The second lack of involvement is by, sadly, I'm going to level the accusation, the Board of Trustees. Do I think there's a group of ten or twelve or fifteen or twenty people intentionally trying to drive the school into the ground as part of a big conspiracy theory? No, I don't. I think there's a core group, a triumvirate, if you will, of, of co-conspirators who may or may not genuinely have the best interests of the school in their heart. And I think the remainder of the board members read their report, the ones that they're given, they have their meeting, and we move on, and they're, you, you can't, you can't not be presidents of companies, business owners. These are smart, experienced people. They can't not know what's going on at Valley Forge unless they just don't know really what's going on at Valley Forge, and they're, they're being fed a line. All right, so back to Sandy's question, what was I told as a parent? Can I start my three-minute clock again? What was I told as a parent? There, having said, I got you. Having seen the degradation of the school over the last twenty years, would I have allowed my son, Aiden, to be the third-generation bandsman? Or for that matter, even be a cadet at the school? No, I was disgusted with the status of the school. There was no way I was going to send him to Valley Forge, especially and send in some money as well. Then I met Walt Lord, and I heard him speak at Alumni Weekend, and I saw his vision, and I saw his passion, and I saw the standing ovation from the roomful of alumni in Malin Hall, and I said, this guy has it going on. I will send Aiden and my check to Valley Forge. He was there six months, the problems persisted, not because of Walt. I was in fairly common contact with, with, with General Lord and with Bandmaster Vincent DeMaro. Bandmaster DeMaro and I spoke almost on a daily basis. And the answers that I continued to get out of staff members on problems were, they just didn't make any sense. So I can see how Walt got frustrated and was pretty much run out on a rail there. What do I think the core problems are? It's back to non-involvement by, by the board, and that's, that impacted my decision. And of course, with the dismissal of Walt and the current status of the school and the general disdain with which both parents and alumni, and through the Capital nineteen twenty-eight group, I met a lot of other parents with the same feelings. We chose to not send Aiden back, and of course, by now you all know that he's also been, been barred from re-enrollment, as many other people have because of the actions that we took. All right, long-winded answer, sorry, Sandy, but I hope I answered that question, go ahead.
No, not a problem. That, well, that, I mean, adds to the guided discussion of, you know, the three questions that we were going to discuss. So it's, it's kind of an open floor at this point in terms of, if anybody has additional comments they want to make, questions that they, they want to ask regarding Medenbok Foundation, who we are, how we can help, what our vision is, what our purpose is, floor is completely open.
Sandy, can you still hear me? I'm reading a question here. Did you have a question from Franz about donations being accepted?
I do not see it.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and field that one, and it looks like there's three other people with, with their hands raised. So I'll tell you what, Sandy, while I'm answering this question here, if you could find who those other three questions are, that'd be, that'd be great. Thank you for doing that. So Franz writes, will our donations be accepted once we send them in, and what is the ultimate goal of the organization? Well, to answer that question, so far, our donations have not even been acknowledged. Our presence has not been acknowledged, other than through some communications by the school that kind of skirt what I would say, general disdain for our organization. But so far, no, the, the donations have not been accepted. I can tell you that there are, there is an advantage to a nonprofit organization with a common mission within Pennsylvania, especially if that organization has a rather large purse as well. There may be advantages in the future that we, where we can leverage help in the school, but again, will they accept that or not? In both cases, or in the many cases where we've tried to help so far, we offered to directly pay the folks that we were, that we were going to contract with to come in and help. For instance, the Thanksgiving dinner for the cadets, we accepted donations, we, we got those. We could go ahead and we, we offered to the school for us to go ahead and pay the food vendor, pay the food service workers, you know, we would eat the cost for a day for a meal. That offer was not even acknowledged, so the money's still sitting there. I hope I've answered that question.
Yep, all right. I'm gonna try to cover everything. So we have a question from, and I apologize, everything just, it says Franz, I'm getting last names and, and all of that fun stuff now. So as a 501(c)(3), can we do anything before there is nothing left to build on? Or do we have to wait until they try to sell the place off?
I'll take a swing at that one unless Walt or Keith Hackenberg would like to.
You want, you want me to take a swing at this one?
Yeah, that'd be great. I think, I think our council is best equipped to answer that one.
Welcome, Key.
Hello, good evening. So to put it in a political manner, because that's what we do, everything we do is strategic. We are an independent organization, and that was done on purpose. Our separate set of bylaws, we are running independently. We have a common mission to succeed, but I don't want to go as far as saying we're running down parallel paths because ultimately, we cannot force the Board of Trustees to accept our donations. But there is a strategic play as well. I will say this, we are not here to try and overthrow the school or the Board of Trustees or take control or anything like that. That's what everybody's thinking the Medenbok Foundation is for, we are not. Are we here to assist the school in an appropriate manner? Absolutely. Are we prepared to take action if the school faces some troubles? Absolutely. But we are also here in the, you know, God forbid, event, the school does go under and fail. We're independent, so we continue to operate. Even if things go awry, which we all desperately want to avoid, we still have our alma mater, we still have our brother and sisterhood, we still have our Valley Forge family that needs help and support in many different ways. So our mission continues. So I know that's sort of a beat-around lawyerly answer, and I apologize for that. But, you know, we do have to be But, you know, we do have to be very clear. We're not trying to undermine the school. We're not trying to overthrow it. That's not our purpose. We're here to support the school and we are strategically placed to be able to do that in any means necessary.
Good answer.
Perfect. And another.
And Sandy, uh, we've got, he's not, I just got a text message. Um, we're, he's not able, he doesn't have the technology, I guess, to, to send in the, the text. Uh, Brother Al Crosby, uh, has a question for the group. So Al, go ahead, unmute and, uh, fire away, brother.
All right. Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Now we can see you as well now.
Well, that's good. Bad leg and all. So I, I guess I kind of, I will end it with a question, but I, I think we need to take from a tenth thousandth of you. General Lord, you said it well. Uh, Keith Hackenberg said it, Mr. McCollum said it very well as also said, you know, everybody knows that when I post, I post some pretty, pretty straightforward factual things that have been re-vetted and they're not necessarily the most positive things in the world. So I've kind of backed that off a little bit, but when some things are so blatant, I posted those things because the administration won't respond, they won't answer, and nor quite frankly, they don't have to. They're, they're a private business and they don't have to say what they're doing or how they're doing it. So I think a good analogy or what someone put on his call is we're not here to take the place of Valley Forge. I think today should be a start of refraining and being more positive in our approach and living our core values, uh, in that we walk the talk, we lead by example. I, I often think of a thing that was in a chapel in the choir room, lead by example. And as I've seen over the years, as many know that I've been involved, administrations come and go. And if the situation gets so bad and desire, such an undesirable situation that, you know, the school is in financial disarray or they have to file some sort of protection or the courts or something like that, I, I think we kind of want to be there like the supporting brothers and sisters that we are. Uh, listen, they're gun shy. We're gun shy. Um, but I don't doubt a passion, having spoken to people on the other side when I, we were in good talking terms, I don't doubt the passion that they have. I just think that when you get in a position where you think you're totally 100% your way or the highway, that's kind of where you get in this position. I think boards or trustees of 10 years ago, 15 years ago and so forth, never strategically plan, as General Lord said, in a good, proper governance because everybody, we have 50 people on the call today. But let's be realistic, there's probably five to six people were the core leadership of this organization here that runs it. And when you have that, that's when you have the lack of transparency, the lack of the ability to discuss different ideas and so forth. So you need to get involved. I just think, and I'm committed today going forward, that before I post something, maybe I, you know, I'll send it and say, look, I, I don't like to give people ultimatums, but look, this is what we're hearing. You know, I, we're taking a new approach, or at least I am, to give you an opportunity to respond to it because we'd like to know. We, I don't want to have driving down Radner Street Road and find there's new houses going up and so forth. Strategically, if that's what they're doing, that's their business, they can do that. But if you want me to invest in your company, tell me what your strategic plan is. And I think that maybe, maybe a question that we just all constantly ask, ask the chairman of the Board of Trustees, ask the president, what's your strategic plan? Are you in survival mode or are you in a long-term investment mode with plans and programs? And if so, how can we support those? So my question here is, is just to the board in general, that is everyone committed to understand that, look, we can't look back. Trust me, uh, I made, I made the self-declaration at a meeting one time of where I stand and what, what I'm about. But I think we look forward because we do have some troubling times coming ahead and we need to make sure that regardless of differences we've had, we want to see the school survive. And I'm committed to that. So I'm, I'm just asking any member of the board, these calls are good, a good place to vet, good place to say, hey, here's where we were from. But I think we need to learn from what we see Valley Forge isn't doing. And that's constantly preventing, presenting a strategic look forward. Because what I've learned in the years that I've been involved at Valley Forge, administrations come and go and so do board members. Um, and I'll just, so my question is, is the strategic plan forward? And, and I know we're not, we could be parallel. I mean, if it's something generating a scholarship for a cadet in the name of a former faculty officer, whether it's a general senile or whatever, we don't need to be at the school or in line with the school to generate a scholarship to send the mission of what we learned at Valley Forge. So I, I guess that's kind of a general question to any member of the board.
I'm also, I'm just gonna follow that up. Thank you, thank you so much, Al. And I think that your comments inspired a lot of questions. So I just, I want to take a moment to, we have limited time. I think we're, we're actually a minute over. So in the essence of time, I want to kind of reiterate kind of what I'm hearing and then we can figure out where we want to focus and how we want to conclude. Um, somebody while you were speaking said, look, I live a stone's throw away. How can I help? What can I do? Somebody else said, let's assume that we can, you know, and I'm paraphrasing at this point because the comments are popping up so fast. Um, what are the three things that, let's, let's assume we can make a difference? What are the three things that we as a foundation, um, want to offer and want to accomplish? And then I have another comment that says, I would like the foundation to consider reviewing the Saving Sweet Brier activities in Lynchburg, Virginia in 2015. There are some similarities there in which the trustees overnight announced the closure. And my window closed. The closure of the school and alumni came together to raise $12 million in just over a month and won the school back. Number two, Valley Forge doesn't respect alumni because we are not funding force that negotiates from a position of strength. That is what this foundation needs to do in order to be taken seriously. That is just my opinion. So those are the three big statements that happened in the last two minutes. And since we're out of time, I will turn it to Walt and Doug to figure out where you want to focus and how you'd like to conclude.
And, uh, Walt, if I could have the floor for just 30 seconds. Um, I'm not quite sure how this technology works. And I'm not, believe it or not, for a jet pilot, I'm not a very tech guy. But I've been seeing hands getting raised. Uh, I want to acknowledge Matt Hefner, uh, Brother Dave Hott from the Regimental Band and a few other folks who have had their hands raised. We're not trying to screen you out or silence you or anything like that. We're working on a technology. If you would please email those questions to info@medenbach.org. If I didn't see your hand go up, if Sandy didn't see your hand, it's, it's, I'm going to claim technical stupidity. Please email your questions to info@medenbach.org. We'll get you either a direct answer to you or better yet, we'll put it up on our Facebook website. The email trail, when we get it out there, we're not trying to silence anyone. We're still learning technology. I'm going to shut up now. Uh, General Lord, pleasure, sir.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, I want to offer a kind of a variation to your recommendation. Don't email them to us. Put your questions up, put your comments up on the Medenbach page right now. Um, that'll hold us accountable. People will see when your question went up and the clock will be ticking and we'll be responsible for answering your questions. Uh, and we will do that in as timely a fashion as we can. Um, I, I do want to hit very briefly, um, and I do apologize. I know there are lots of other questions out there and we will answer them all, probably mostly via the, the Medenbach website or our Facebook page. But Dave Hott, you did have a great question and I've been asked that question before. What are you going to use my money for? Um, what kinds of things are you going to do? Well, assuming that we get unrestricted gifts for the most part, which I will assume we will, I'll tell you, I've got three things in mind and, and it's just my thought at this point. And I will be very open to suggestion from our membership and our board. Obviously, the, the golden ticket is a scholarship. If we get to the point where our donors fund us to the point that we can fund a cadet or twos, the year of a cadet or two at Valley Forge, that would be spectacular. Medenbach Foundation sponsored scholarships. On a smaller scale, I think most of us would agree that there are probably two areas we should look to contribute to and improve cadet quality of life. One is infrastructure. And I'll hearken to, uh, to our, our great friend, um, uh, Jordan's, uh, our fellow alumnus, uh, who contributed $100,000, uh, to refurb the bootle shop. Yeah, I'm sorry, my mind is moving a lot faster than my, my mouth can, uh, can keep up with. Um, Jordan Schumacher.
That was Jeremy Schumaker.
Hey, I'm sorry, Jeremy Schumacher. Um, Al, please, please let Jeremy know that I deeply apologize for messing up his first name. Um, you know, Jeremy's generous contribution to the bootle shop. We certainly probably won't throw down hundred dollar, hundred thousand dollar checks from time to time. But if we can make very small contributions to cadet quality of life through infrastructure, I think that's a great goal. And then programmatic contributions, things like funding class or club trips, uh, funding visitors to come onto campus and provide special talks or instruction. Anything that we can do to provide for cadet quality of life and quality of education, I think that should be our focus. Uh, and again, I apologize for, for losing my own train of thought there for a second. Um, Doug, before I close, in the interest of time, please, uh, give us any concluding remarks you may have.
Thank you, Walt. Uh, just for, I, I just wanted to add that we, as the initial founders of the foundation, uh, realized we can't do this on our own. And as we talked about the governance committee, uh, we need committees. We need committees to get people involved. And, uh, i- if it's, if it's events and if it's awards, if it's a scholarship fund, uh, we need you people who are interested, members of the foundation now, to get involved with us. We, we were just designed to kick it off. We can't do this by ourselves. So I would ask you to volunteer. Uh, we hopefully will have something up on the website that says, here's some different committees and I'd like to be involved with it and we'll touch back to you. Walt and everybody involved, since I was the first one to speak, I'm not going to be the last. I'm going to still give it to you, Walt. But I would like to thank you. It was a positive night. It was what we hoped for. It wasn't a bitch session. We all assume and kind of realize that we know where the problems lie and that we know we're being pushed out and we have to work a way to get back in. They don't like us very much. We have to prove to them we're awesome. We're awesome alumni who care deeply for our school. With that, thank every single one of you for being here tonight and that I hope you have pleasant and safe holidays. And while this thing called the pandemic continues to race through our country, please stay safe. Walt, it's up to you.
Doug, thank you, sir. Um, before I close, I do want to comment on a, a comment that I had in a separate text with, uh, one of our brothers who I communicate with fairly frequently, Luke Aiken. And, and he commented that, you know, we're doing a lot of asking for participation and not a lot of asking for money. Um, and, and I'll tell you, from my personal perspective, that's, it's very deliberate because I want to make sure that I'm earning your gifts. Uh, we've got one very affluent alumnus who is prepared to give to the Medenbach Foundation and he wants to give in a very substantial way. And I know he wants to give before the end of the fiscal year. I'm about to reach out to him and tell him that I'm not comfortable right now asking for that huge donation because I don't feel like I've proven to him yet that we've earned it. I want to make sure that we do all of the things we've promised initially, that we grow our board, that we grow our committees, that we show good governance and that we respond to our constituents before I ask someone to write that big check. And I'll say that to all of you who are prepared to give in large or small ways. Uh, i- if you feel like you have the confidence in us to do that now, that's awesome. Please do. Uh, but if you feel like you want to see us prove ourselves a bit more, I'm absolutely okay with that. Uh, just when your heart tells you it's time, please do give. Uh, because we will become a bit more powerful, we'll have a bit more throw weight when we do have a bit of a bigger bank account. Um, I want to thank our board members again. Uh, they put in a lot of time, a lot of effort in building this organization in their free time, what little free time most of them have. And I'm deeply thankful to all of them for that. And I really want to thank all of you. Um, you know, I continue to tell people that it's very difficult to describe the brotherhood and sisterhood of Valley Forge if you haven't experienced it. I try to do that anecdotally to tell them why I'm so committed to my brothers and sisters from this school. Uh, and frankly, I don't know if I do a very good job of that or not because you, you really don't understand it unless you've lived it. And I appreciate all of you and I love you all as brothers and sisters. Uh, I love your love for our alma mater. I love your loyalty to each other. Uh, I appreciate your support for the Medenbach Foundation. You know, I think we're a reflection of the alumni base in general. We're small in numbers, but what we lack in numbers, we make up for in unity and passion and love for our school. And I really appreciate your patience. Uh, again, we've come out of the gates fairly deliberately, fairly slowly, but for very good reason. And I, I hope I've explained those reasons adequately tonight. Uh, and if I haven't, please ask us, uh, whether it's by email or on that Medenbach Facebook page. I really do prefer that your comments and questions and even criticisms come on that page for all the world to see because that just reinforces the transparency that we've promised all of you. Keep your feedback coming, keep your questions coming. Uh, again, I am an eternal optimist and I don't believe that a great institution that has people like all of you behind it can fail. We'll get to a point where the school will either see us as a force for good, and I hope that's the case, or they just might get so desperate that they need our help. And that's fine too. Either way, as long as we have an opportunity to step in and help, I don't really care how we get there. So that's all I've got for all of you tonight. Like you celebrated a very joyous, blessed Christmas to all of you and your families. And I will say to each of you, I wish you a half decent new year. Let's face it, I'm just going to try to manage expectations here. Half decent is about all I'm going to shoot for in the new year, based on the year that we're coming out of. So thank you for tuning in tonight and have a great evening. Touch the Lord, salute the Lord.